Next, we will have the oath for the superintendent.
Hi, Joseph Ricken, I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent of schools of the White Plains City School District, White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability.
Okay, next, we will have the election of the temporary chairperson. Do we have a nominee?
I nominate Ms. Michelle Melendez as our temporary chairperson.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Be careful with that power.
Yes.
As quickly as you can.
Okay.
All right, we can get rid of this now.
Okay, we have the oath to our newly elected board members, Mrs. Eller and Ms. Daniele. Can you read this together, okay?
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability.
Okay, next, we'll have the nomination of the board president. Do we have a nominee?
Yes, I hereby nominate Rosemary Eller to be president of the Board of Education of the City School District.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
This goes back to you, Ms. Melendez. Thank you.
She wields this money.
She hasn't taken her oath yet.
Yeah, you have to sign by it. That's okay. Okay, next, thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone, for your, um, your support, and, um... Oh, I have to say the oath.
Oh, yes.
I did say the oath. Okay.
You gave it to her.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of president of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability.
I wish her husband...
I don't know. He thought he was gonna surprise me, but he did not. So he's here. Thank you, thank you, Michelle, well done, well done. Next, I would like, um, to solicit nominations for the vice president of the Board of Education in absentia. I would like to nominate, um, Dr. Kane Letizia.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, as you know, Kane will take his oath within the prescribed period of time, and congratulations, Kane, he could be live streaming us, I don't know. So, um, next, um, for items 2C, I'm sorry, I had this all written down, from item 2C through item 10, um, I, we're gonna adopt by consent, and we will give, um, Michelle, your oath after...
After.
Yes. So may I have a motion, um, to approve items 2C through item 10 on our reorg agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions?
Just, I guess, just a description of what we're doing, because very quick, and it's a lot of work, is probably important for our viewing audience.
Yes.
Dr. Ricken.
Well, you know, I, um, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Ricken, I, yeah, I was, I was, uh, just thinking how, how quickly we're able to move through the process of reorganization, but how much goes into this moment in getting, and getting us here. So the first thing I want to do is I'd like to thank all of the, the members of the cabinet, and most importantly, all of the members of the team in all of our various offices who worked so hard to bring all of these items together for the board's consideration prior to this evening, and anybody who might be viewing at home and reviewing the agenda, they can see how many things the Board of Education needs to consider and reauthorize annually, and that is a good process, because it makes sure that every year, the Board of Education, as well as all of the, the school district team members, are going through and revisiting and reviewing every single item with regard to the way in which the Board governs overseas, and all of the responsibilities, including the fiduciary responsibilities of all the members of the Board of Education. So, um, I do want to thank not only the board for all of the many hours of work that goes through reviewing and refining, but also all of the team members here in the school district. And on the, on the agenda, you see everything from, as you just saw, Ms. Melendez taking over pro temp, so that the, even the construct of the Board of Education is reconstituted each year. So, thank you, Mr. Ricken.
Can I just make a comment also about, um, I guess it was the facilities, um, fee?
Yes.
That is going to be a new policy that the policy committee will be working on.
Yes, we have a bunch of policies to update and that are gonna be coming through too. Summary.
Yep. And, and what's, what's really nice is that, you know, Valerie and I, our newest board member, we did have a chance to sit and go through the things and see what must be up approved and operational when our school year, um, starts. It's not easy, but, um, you know, I think it's, it's, we do appreciate the amount of work, so, and so, and we have a new board member that also appreciates that amount of work. So thank you all.
And we appreciate you doing it as a consent agenda.
But I, I also wanted just to welcome Valerie, our new board member. We haven't had a new board member in a while. And if new board is good.
All right, so, do we do all in favor on the consent?
No.
No?
Please let them ask us.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. So the last item is to adjourn our reorganization meeting. May I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's June, July 6th, and this is gonna be our, um, our regular meeting. The mission statement, "The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world." And in Jim, in true Jim fashion, this is our first meeting, we think it's important to restate our mission, because it all, it's just a level set every single time as to why we do what we do. So I do appreciate reading that, um, all the time, every meeting. Next, Dr. Ricken.
Thank you. I'd like to draw your attention to item C and join me in a moment of silent reflection as we remember Dr. Brenda Brandt Davis, district-wide school social worker until June 2002, and Ms. Mina Stowe, noakes, I'm sorry, district-wide, uh, school social worker until she retired Thank you.
Thank you. Next, um, we're gonna go to item D, which is a public hearing on our code of conduct. We all have, um, we all have it attached, um, for review, um, this is something that we review every year. I don't know, Deb, if you wanna add anything, but we review this every year, we do, um, you know, we do tweak it as necessary, but it has gone through a lot of revisions over the years, and we think that it is, um, it reflects our restorative justice equity. Um, and, um, it's our public hearing on that. If there are any questions on it, um, please ask, um, or send it to us via email, right? Or no?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so next, Dr. Littler.
Thank you, Madam President, congratulations again. I, I do also want to thank Ms. Al Garten, as well as the committee who works to review and solicit feedback related to the, the school district code of conduct annually. It's an important process, and you know, the code of conduct, at least when I was in school, when you referred to the code of conduct, it was always about consequences, discipline, but it is much more than that. It does define and lay out, um, a clear line of, of expectations that not only we expect from our students, but also that our students can expect from us. And, um, the process to refine it and solicit feedback each year is done because it is a living document, and we do learn, and we do find better ways to do things. Um, and so whenever possible, we, we like to be able to stay on the cutting edge of providing the best service we can for our students, and also presenting very, very clear expectations, so that anybody could read them, and everybody could understand what is expected when you're a member of the White Plains City School District community. So Deb, thanks for, for, um, working on that along with the committee. Yeah. I do also, just briefly, superintendents report this evening, again, congratulations to, uh, Ms. Daniele, and congratulations to Ms. Eller, congratulations to Dr. Letizia, it's gonna be another great year, and it's just like that, isn't it? Well, you know, we walk across the stage and congratulate the students, you know, 14 days ago, and then boom, it's the new school year. Um, and, you know, we love that, um, but it also does, uh, it requires a lot, and so I want to also thank and recognize, uh, Mr. Stefanelli, as well as all of our team members on facilities operations, buildings and grounds, because I know people think that summer vacation means school districts close down, but it's some of the busiest times of the year, because it's eight weeks, that's it, um, where, you know, folks are really rushing to do a great deal, to get ready for the new school year, to have everything pristine and beautiful, plus, um, you know, complete construction projects that are underway. And Mr. Stefanelli and I, and I shared this, this morning, um, a synopsis of the work that's taking place district-wide, and there's so much of it, and it's really exciting stuff. So Frank, thank you, um, and thanks to everybody on the team for, for all the hard work there. Yeah, absolutely.
It's an impressive list.
It really is, yeah. Yeah, same goes as well for, for, um, our technological infrastructure, even though you can't see it happening necessarily. A lot of work always going on in the background, literally in the background, making sure we, we are reimaging, getting all of our programming up to date, installing new programs, swapping out new devices, uh, old devices for new devices, getting assistive technology ready, all of those things that we need to have in place for when our children start off in September. So a lot of stuff happening, which is really exciting, um, and at the same time, we just came off of celebrating what was a really great and successful year. We had great, great, uh, end-of-the-year activities, including moving up ceremonies and commencement ceremonies, um, and it's always wonderful to celebrate all of the things that our children have accomplished, both, um, you know, those who, who were walking across the stage in graduation, but also those who were matriculating up from whatever grade level they may have been in. You know, my daughter says, "I'm gonna, I'm gonna be in a grade now," because she's not in kindergarten anymore, right? Um, and, and that's special, and that's really, um, that's really exciting for our kids. So, um, thanks to everybody who helped to make that happen, thanks to everybody who helped to support, especially PTAs, uh, all of our PTA members who, you know, came, came together and helped to make the end of the year such a memorable time for our children, really, really good stuff. Um, we also have the State Foundation Aid and American Rescue Plan Funding Report, it's available for anybody to review. A lot of, um, again, thank you, and, um, to, to our folks in, in the business office as well. A lot of work went into getting us to where we are today, planning, making sure that we were planning collaboratively to utilize the funding that was coming, both, additional funding that was coming both in from Foundation Aid, and also, um, from, from the federal government, to, to really get the most bang, if you will, for our buck. And, um, we've done that, you know, we've been able to then report to the federal government on our progress, and be able to display that for, um, all to be, to be able to see, um, and utilize the additional Foundation Aid funding to expand program and provide additional services to our students. And I want to thank Debbie, uh, Deb, again, you know, for, for all that work, along with our colleagues, in, in planning for, for those applications as well. I also have really great news, it just happened, maybe a half hour before the meeting started, we learned from Dawn McGinn, as you know, Dawn oversees our food services team, that every one of our schools has been certified for, um, um, the community program where all of our children will eat.
For free.
So that's, that is, really is. It's great news for our kids, you know, and, and we're still gonna advocate, um, and, and we're still gonna work to make sure that all children everywhere, um, are able to eat when they're at school, but in White Plains, we're really thrilled, and, you know, and I think...
Breakfast's also, right?
Breakfast and lunch, yeah, breakfast and lunch, so it's really good stuff. Um, so there'll be more to come, as, as well as, as the planning that takes place in the summer, whether it be retreats or, or, um, you know, goal, goal planning sessions, but a lot happening in all, um, really exciting, and, uh, really appreciate the opportunity to, to kick off another year in the White Plains City School District with everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And, um, the other, you know, the other thing that I think that we're really fortunate with, if I just may add one, um, item, is the collaboration with, um, our parents, and, you know, we see our PTA parent, our PTA council representative, and a parent, and another parent here, it just, it just, that collaboration is so important, so we're so happy, you know, that you're here with us tonight, and we know, we know, Jessica, that you will communicate everything, and we're so appreciative, and we always like to meet our parents of our students, so we also, um, we thank you for coming as well.
Especially on July 6th. Thanks. Thank you.
I know, I know, I know. Um, we don't have, um, a part for, um, board announcements, but as you said, Dr. Ricker, we did attend the graduations, and we all went to the, the elementary schools, and, um, it, it, in Eastview, I mean, it's really, uh, not Eastview, Highlands, um, it's really a great time, it's a little sad, because you hate to kind of let go when you get to the high school, because now you realize you're really letting go, and you're letting the kids go out, and it's, it's bittersweet in a way, but September rolls around and we get to do it again, so that's the gift of all of this.
And it was great to be back at the county center.
Yes, it was, especially on an iffy weather day.
Yeah.
Just let me put this out to the community, it was the first graduation I missed since 2005, I had a virus. It wasn't COVID, but I couldn't, it was very...
But you did the right thing, because you were better, but it was not 24 hours since you had your fever, so that's important.
That's right. So, thank you.
But you were there in spirit, so...
But we appreciate your caution.
Yeah. So next, we're gonna move on to public participation, if there is any, you know, we welcome comments from the public on any issue, with a time limit of three minutes per person and a maximum of 25. Please protect the privacy of, of your student, and know that, um, any matters of more personal nature can be addressed privately with our administration. Is there any public participation in this crowd, Deb? Okay, thank you. Next, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda. We have, uh, summary actions number four through, through eight. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any question on any things under the consent agenda?
We do, we have, um...
Donations?
Yep.
Yep.
We have, um, sorry, Mr. Shepherd, we have, um, an item B, donations, like to thank, we're grateful for photography equipment, two floodlights with stands, umbrellas, vinyl backgrounds, clamps, and a stool from Mae Morin, so thank you so much, and, uh, we will come in good use, that's for sure.
Thank you. Any, any questions or anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we're gonna move into our individual action items. We have the recommended action being the authorization of the board president to execute employment agreements and amendments, and amendments to employment agreements. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended approval of a section one merger with other districts for a girls varsity ice hockey team. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? And I guess it's because there are not a lot of, um, teams that, they do have to merge, and they become teams, uh, you know, of combined names, similar in swimming, now, when you don't have a, a big team, you might have, let's say, Byram Hills, and some, some other school, and some other school, and they all merge into one, Shetty, yes, they all merge into one, so that, so that they can swim as a team and compete, you know, because the teams are so small, and it makes things more competitive. So the same thing with hockey.
I just wanna, I wanna thank the Board of Education, I also want to thank, uh, Mr. Cameron, um, as well as our, our coaching staff and our student athletes, because, you know, we've had tremendous participation from female student athletes on, on our varsity hockey team over the years, and this is gonna be another great opportunity for those student athletes to, um, continue to excel. Um, so we're really fortunate to, to be able to do this, and we're appreciative for your support.
Is a former ice hockey player?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended approval of, um, an overnight field trip for the White Plains High School cross-county team. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So, um, the, the team will go to a meet in, in Central, meet at Central Park in Schenectady, uh, Friday, October 6th, and you know, I did a season of cross-country, it was a hard senior year when they made me do that, but it really, it set me up for the scholarship I eventually got, so I think it's a great opportunity for them to go, uh, outside of White Plains and, um, compete. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sure Coach Singleton will keep a good eye on everybody.
Next, um, we have the recommended adoption of two policies, um, the addendum to non-represented, represented employees, um, and that's the June 12th doc, and the non-represented employees policy, um, that was updated.
Yes.
I think we can have a little comment on that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So, um, basically, we just needed to make some annual revisions to the policy. Our process is to make sure that the Board of Education's Human Resources Committee reviews, uh, these recommended updates, and then, of course, that the district's legal counsel vets them as well, um, then we put them up for, on the board's review, and that's what we have this evening, and, um, what we're talking about is, basically, working conditions for non-re, uh, folks who are outside of collective bargaining.
Yeah.
Right, these types of things, hours per day, vacation, working, working days per year.
Yes, sir.
Things that our regulatory agencies would ask for, and we'd be required to provide if asked as well.
That's right.
Sounds like a good thing to have.
Yes, sir.
May I have a...
Yeah, no.
Yeah, yeah, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, who's second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have, um, item E, which, um, the title really is, it's not a settlement, it's an appeal.
There was two of them, the second one is an appeal, the first one's a settlement.
Okay, two, yeah, two, two in there. Okay, so one is the settlement, and one is an appeal, okay, so we have a...
Ah, so we're just missing the title for these.
Yes, because I scrolled through it as one, yeah, I, yeah, okay.
So do we have to retitle something?
Yeah, I updated it, and I don't know why I didn't save, I don't know what happened.
Can we make a, maybe a...
Motion to, to edit the, the title...
The title of item F.
Of item E, right?
I mean, I don't...
Well, I don't, E, well, yeah.
There's two.
Yeah, so E is the settlement, and F is the appeal. So we'll take the settlement of the impartial hearing first, may I have a motion? I think we did that. Um, are there any questions?
We just need a second.
We had, we had a second, right?
I think I said...
Yeah. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's the settlement, so now we have, we have, um, the appeal of the impartial hearing in the combined document that we got?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and that will be, oh, that's item F, got it.
Right, right. Appeal of impartial hearing.
Here is item F. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, I have a question for clarity.
Who seconded?
Second.
Questions?
Do we vote on the affirmation, or did we deny appeal?
Uh, we voted on the affirmation to, based on legal counsel, to move forward with the appeal.
Okay, so, so legal counsel's recommendation is to, I would be the positive, would be the correct...
Yes, sir, to vote for it.
Again, we're dealing with appeals, I want to make sure we get, we get this correct.
Yeah. Okay, so that's it, that's what our proposal is. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, just, just for clarity, that just came out, the topic, the name came out as new agenda item, which we did get a new one, so it's actually, um, the appeal, and everything was rolled into one document. Okay, so we have that, and that'll be corrected for the final record.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we move to board, um, committee reports, and we really haven't met, we did meet for HR, but we don't discuss matters of a personal nature, publicly, but we did meet for that. Um, we're looking forward to the start of a new financial year, to start up the finances, the budget season, we're gonna start planning for the next budget season.
We're in audit now.
Right, we are in audit, we are in audit.
Budgeting is a weekend.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, that's, you know, we don't really have any board discussion, because we haven't had any stuff.
When you're...
No, you go.
Well, I just wanted to, um, also, also highlight, and again, you know, while we can't discuss totally the Human Resources Committee, the, the work that the, uh, Human Resources Department and the team members who are, also participate on interview committees have been doing, we're in a really good place with regard to hiring this year, um, you know, to be where we're already at, right, Mr. Pepper, um, you know, July 6th, and, you know, so that's, that's really good. We do have, uh, uh, some open positions that are, that are still being, we're running interviews for. Um, anybody who's interested in open positions in the White Plains City School District should definitely visit the district's website, um, under employment opportunities, um, but again, you know, thanks to, uh, the work that everyone's doing in HR, um, we're, we're moving right along. Summer is also the time where we then welcome new employees, including new teachers, we have new teacher orientation, which we'll have in August, and we'll talk more about, and it is also the season for ongoing training for all of us, so we all begin our Global Compliance Network training, which, um, you know, is probably up to, I don't know, Mr. Pepper, what do you sign us now, about eight hours of training each?
At least.
At least. And so it's important, and, you know, for anybody who, who may wonder, um, every member of the school district community, every employee in the school district, every single year is required to participate in really important training, everything from right-to-know training, um, to workplace conditions, um, to cybersecurity, to safety and security plans, um, all throughout the school district. So, there's, there's a lot that takes place, and, um, it is, it is an important time, but it's also a great opportunity to grow and learn. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, I wanted to also acknowledge John Shepherd and John Misavich, um, in the back. I know Dr. Ricker recognized, um, recognized you both, but I just also, you know, wanna get an additional shout-out for what you do and the value, um, that it is for our community to be able to be technically here, um, because of what you're providing, and to let you guys know that it is very much appreciated. So, again, we thank you very, very much. And without any ado, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved. Second.
Oh, and we can't forget, we have to cancel that, let's have, let's have, um, Michelle read her oath, please, and then we'll adjourn, so sorry. This is what you get once a year, once a year agendas. Yes, yes, please, yes.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of school district clerk, of the city school district, of the...
Clerk of the City School District of the City of White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability. Thank you all. Thank you.
Next time.
Yes, and thank you, thank, thank you for leading our meeting and giving back the gamble. So now, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Welcome, welcome, welcome.